Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Fruta City Council meeting. It is now 7:01 PM, and I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Deb, would you please call roll?
Counselor Buck is excused absent. Counselor Lenhart, here. Counselor Harvey?
Here.
Counselor Crye is also excused absent. Counselor O'Brien, here. Counselor Breaman?
Here.
All right. If everybody please stand with us for us to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have an agenda before us. Deb, do we have any changes to that?
We do have an amendment to the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor. Item 6D, previously read, an appointment to the One Riverfront Commission appointment. But as of 3:30 this afternoon, I corrected it to read the reappointment of Mel Mulder to the Planning Commission for another three-year term.
Okay. Anything else?
No other amendments to the mayor, Mr.-
All right. Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
How about the agenda? Or, sorry. All right.
Second.
Counselor Breaman?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Lenhart?
Yes.
Counselor Harvey?
Yes.
Motion passes for zero.
All right, we've got one proclamation tonight, and it's proclaiming August 21st, 2021, as Ellen Roberts' Day in the city of Fruta. We've got Ellen here tonight with us, and I've asked Karen to read that proclamation for us.
All right. So, August 21st, 2021, as Ellen v. Roberts' Day in the city of Fruta. Whereas Ellen Virginia Compton was born on August 21st, 1921, in Branson, Missouri, and moved with her family to the town of Fruta in 1923. And whereas Ellen worked tirelessly as a farmhand on the Fruta homestead in the early 20s, as a fruit harvester, cowpuncher, horse rider, ditch cleaner, and animal tender, all before her mile-long walk to school. And as a young girl, Ellen had the envious distinction of having met the one and only Mike the Headless Chicken before he died. And whereas Ellen was a member of the Fruta Linuses for over 37 years, she was also a founding member of the Fruta Senior Task Force and was vitally instrumental in raising over $89,000 for a senior recreation center as part of the Fruta Community Center project by collecting aluminum cans, some of which she crocheted into skirts, hats, and purses for the cause. And whereas Ellen is a three-time champion of the Chicken Dance Contest held at the annual Mike the Headless Chicken Festival, where she can be found wearing her notorious chicken cap. And whereas, when Ellen isn't helping out with the Mike the Headless Chicken Festival, she volunteers at the Fruta Community Center Senior Program for Thursday potluck lunches, talent shows, hula shows, and movie nights. And whereas Ellen has been a performer of the Patsy Cline wannabes skit, as well as a hula dancer, line dancer, and belly dancer for local nursing homes, hospitals, decon fest shows, special events, and talent shows, sometimes performing four or five times per week. And whereas Ellen has made such a difference in so many Fruta seniors' lives and all of our lives, and as a great-great-great-grandmother, the lives of her family. And whereas Ellen has embodied the great spirit and character of the entire Fruta community as a whole. Now, therefore, the Fruta City Council, on behalf of the citizens of Fruta, wishes Ellen a very happy 100th birthday and hereby proclaims August 21st, 2021, as Ellen v. Roberts' Day in the city of Fruta. Yay!
Did you want to say anything, Ellen? Did you want to say anything?
You can get right up there at that microphone if you want.
Karen, good afternoon. Your photo.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
I got tired out just reading how that stuff she does.
All right, I don't know how everybody's going to follow this, but we're going to move into our public participation time. So this is the section where we set aside for the city council to listen to comments by the public regarding items that do not otherwise appear on the agenda. Generally, the city council will not discuss the issues and will not take an official action under this section. We'd ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. So is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on something not on the agenda? You'd step up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, please.
Archie Lopez, 1681 Ruby Lee Drive. And I just want to open in prayer. So we- Father in heaven, thank you so much for this time to come before you and before these guys. We thank you for all that are on this council, and we thank you for the time tonight to just go over these matters. We pray for your blessing in the Yeshua's name. Amen.
Thank you, Archie. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak on something not on the agenda? All right, hearing none, we're going to close the public participation and bring it to the consent agenda. So these are all items where all conditions or requirements have been agreed to or met prior to the time they come before council for final action. They'll all be approved by a single motion of the council. So we will open this up to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on an item on the consent agenda? All right, if you please step up, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Richard Hayes. I'm in the River Rock subdivision, which is just adjacent to the new development which you're going to vote on tonight. And I wondered a couple things, since our last meeting here. Has anything been changed with what you're presenting as what you want to get approved? Let me go on a little further. I'm personally and still against the more dense subdivision theme that you're going for. I'd like to see our larger lots of 1,000, 10,000 square feet, like the original proposal was planned for that area. And in comment, I'd like to say that, in my opinion, the small lots that you kind of are referring to, and more dense people, is nothing more than a glorified trailer park with nice homes, which this town seems to have plenty of. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak on something on the consent agenda? Is it on one of the ordinances we're voting on, on the consent? Oh, you're on the quasi judicial? No, that's later in the meeting. So we'll give you an opportunity during that public hearing. Okay. Okay, well, we're coming up on that after this. So is there anybody else that would like to speak on something on the consent agenda? All right, hearing none, I'll bring it back to council. Are there any questions, comments? Do we have a motion?
I move we approve the consent agenda stated.
I second.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Breaman?
Yes.
Counselor Harvey?
Yes.
Counselor Lenhart?
Yes.
Motion passes for zero.
All right, we're going to move into our public hearings. We've got three hearings tonight. All three are quasi judicial hearings. And so our first one is our ordinance 2021-16, a second reading, mending the official zoning map of the city of Fruta by zoning approximately 13.25 acres of property located at 960 Stone Mountain Drive in South Fruta. So Henry's going to present on that. Once he presents, then we will open it up for public comment. And then, once we close that, then we'll bring it back to council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Henry. I'll be giving the staff presentation tonight on ordinance 2021-16, also referred to as the Southern Military Zone. Currently, the property is zoned large lot residential. And the request is to amend that or rezone it to South Fruta Residential. The subject property is located at 960 Stone Mountain Drive. It's approximately 13.25 acres and on the south side of the interstate, just south of the Stone Mountain subdivision. And west of the Garden Estate subdivision here, you see the official zoning map of the city of Fruta with the colors indicating their current zone. Mostly surrounded by, well, there's plenty of PUDs around here, planning and developments, and some community residential. There are large lot residential down to the southeast. And then to the east, across the canal, is South Fruta Residential. Just to give you an idea, there's a plethora of different zoning types in this area, all most likely an indication of past, future land use maps and projects that have happened. The planning and development zones are basically specific zone districts that have their own essentially dimensional standards. In the approval criteria, there's a public benefit, most likely, that occurred when those planning and developments were presented to the council when they were developed. There's also underlying lots within those planning and developments. That's pretty typical of those, and if they're not called out, we refer to the future land use map for those. So the master plan or the comprehensive plan does recommend South Fruta residential zoning type for this area. The master plan quotes, "As the South Fruta residential, two to five land use category is intended for residential neighborhoods south of I-70. Much of the land is already built out at one to four units per acre. Being next to the river, some of the area is in the 100-year floodplain and not suitable for higher density development. Additionally, the access to the area from the rest of Fruta is constrained to Highway 340 and the frontage road that crosses over I-70 at 20 Road." That comes from Chapter 3 or Page 31 of the Fruta Comprehensive Plan. So when we have the future land use map and we have those guiding principles, those essentially are what? Direct staff, city council, planning commission, property owners, and the public to how the future growth of Fruta wants to occur, based on the community's input over the kind of a community input through the master plan. So lots of discussions happen and lots of guidance to making some of these decisions is very important when now we start to review applications in accordance with our future land use map and our master plan and what that recommends for certain areas. As we jump into the land use code requirements, there are five in here, but only two must be met. You can see here the and/or statement. So the first one must be met and one of the next four. So the proposed amendment is compatible with surrounding land uses pursuant to Section 17.07.023 and is consistent with the city's goals, policies, and master plan. And so like I mentioned before, we need to have those master plan guiding principles in order to make good recommendations to the planning commission, city council, when we talk to the public at the front counter and when we review these applications. And so the comprehensive plan does support and recommend South Fruta residential for this area. The South Fruta residential zone is primarily a single-family residential zone. The density associated with this zone district is two to five dwelling units per acre and should be compatible with surrounding land uses that are currently established. And also the future residential development as supported by the future land use map and supporting documents within the comprehensive plan. And if we go back to this area or this zoning map, you can see the white parcels are either undeveloped and are in the unincorporated Mesa County zone district. So they're eligible for annexation, and if they were to come in and say, "Hey, I need to annex and I need to zone," what would I zone my property as? Commercial, residential, you know, whatever? So we need to look at the future land use map to help direct those conversations. And so South Fruta residential is supported in those areas that are still yet to be annexed and developed into the city. My next slide, I'll bounce over, shows nearby subdivision comparisons of gross density over the amount of acres that they were developed on. You can see here, 3.4, 3.1, just under three is 2.8 for these two, but these are PUDs. So these are most likely larger lots proposed, you know, to give a specific project or product to essentially the housing market at that time. And then over here to the land use table, you can see Large Lot Residential, which is currently is detached, single-family. Single-family attached is allowed in both zone districts. If you look down here, manufactured home and a mobile home are allowed in the current zone. And in South Fruta residential, they are conditionally allowed. So they need to be reviewed through a public hearing process. Next, or to follow up on number one, the proposal does meet the comprehensive plan and is compatible with surrounding land uses. The next one, number two, the land to be rezoned was previously zoned in air or the existing zoning is inconsistent with the city's goals, policies, and master plan. Staff feels this one is applicable at this time. It was not zoned in air. It was zoned large lot residential and was essentially proposed for a future school at that point. The school district owned this property for a while. They made the decision to construct an elementary school in a different location that kind of had more density around it, making a strategic move and building Monument Ridge Elementary School. And so they sold this property, and now it is being proposed to be rezoned to be more consistent with the land use, the master plan. Sorry. So like I said, the land use and the future land use map supports the South Fruta residential or the, yeah, the South Fruta residential zone in this area. And so this criteria has been met as well. The area for which the amendment is requested has changed substantially, that the proposed zoning better meets the needs of the community. This criteria has also been met as well to address, not entirely, but some, a few more housing products on the market. The large lot residential versus the South Fruta residential, there's not that significant amount of difference between how many lots you can get with either. The minimum lot size for a large lot residential is 10,000 square feet, and South Fruta residential is 7,000 square feet. Now, we need to think about the geographic constraints within a future development and how much density that will allow this project. And so those will be reviewed at a later date. I'm sure that the public that's here might want to speak of that. But when we're zoning a property, we need to think about the future land use map and those guiding principles in the comprehensive plan and make the decision, not what the future development may or may not look like or trigger with regards to traffic. But this area for proposed, they're trying to get just a little bit more out of it than the large lot residential, but would meet a housing need that was expressed in our comprehensive plan a number of different times. And so staff feels that this criteria has been met as well. The next two, four and five, feel that they're not applicable. Number five, there's no annexation of this property, and so that's not, that doesn't apply. And there's not a comprehensive revision of the overall master plan at this time. And so that is not applicable at this time either. Jumping to legal notice, you can see here, this buffer map with the parcels highlighted in blue, those are the properties that received legal notice postcards within, they're within 350 feet of the radius of the subject property. We also are required to put legal notice on the site. This parcel has essentially three frontages. So one on 17 and a half road, there's a star there. One on Stone Mountain Drive, and then one through Apple Lane, which is Garden Estate subdivision. So you can see here these pictures. We tried to make sure that anybody that was interested in this project or maybe didn't receive the notice postcard because they are small and they could get lost, you know, in the mail, when they're, you know, digging through the mail, that they were notified. You know, there was multiple applications or attempts to notify the public of this application. These are required to happen 15 days prior to the planning commission meeting, and they occurred 18 days prior to the planning commission meeting, which was June 4th, was the date that the legal notice happened. And it's not going to respond. The planning commission at their June 22nd meeting recommended approval by a vote of six to zero. Those are in the minutes that you had within the packet of the planning commission meeting. There were public comments received. Those were included in your packet, and we did receive oral public comments at the planning commission meeting on June 22nd. And to conclude the presentation, Mr. Mayor, staff recommends that because the application meets the required review criteria for a rezone, we recommend that the subject property be rezoned to South Fruta residential. And there's just a suggested motion for later, if you need it. That'll conclude my presentation. Thank you.
All right. And then do we have an applicant for this?
Yes.
All right.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff. My name's Kim Kirk. I'm the owner of Kirk Land Consulting and Development in Grand Junction. Also, tonight with me, I have Ty Johnson, who is with Vortex Engineering, working on the rezone requests with me as well. We're here tonight to represent the owner of the property, Synergy Builders, to request a rezone for the 13 acres. Henry graciously presented all of the information to you, and I won't go and read through exactly everything he just said, but I'll just give you a brief overview, if you will. We are requesting a rezone for this property from South Fruta, I'm sorry, from Large Lot Residential to South Fruta Residential. The change came along and the opportunity for us to request the rezone when the Fruta master plan was updated. And as Henry said, it took, made a little bit of a change to this project, where the lots went from 10,000 square feet minimums to 7,000 square feet minimum. But, you know, it's a, it's a perfect proposal for this area. We're not asking for any special requests or any, any type of, you know, any type of special allowances for this rezone. It's very compatible with what the Fruta Comprehensive Plan suggests, and we feel like it's a good request. And we'd really like to, you know, appeal to you and say that, you know, we do understand there's neighbors here that don't like the thought of this rezone request, but it is very compatible and well within the Fruta master plan. So we feel it's a reasonable request. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Kim. All right, with that, we're going to open this up to public comment. So if there's anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this, we'd ask that you state your name and address for the record and that you'd please keep your comments to three minutes, please.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm Mike Robinson. I live at 686 Beach Road, which is the subdivision right next where they're going to be building cedar mills. What I have, my concerns are is that went from large lot residential down to South Fruta residential, decreasing the size, increasing the density. And we barely have the infrastructure now, grocery stores and everything else, to support what we have. Right next door to this off South Maple is the Red Cliffs. We're putting 40 new trailer lots there with the plan for Phase 3, with I don't know how many more going in there. And the, with the infrastructure there, coming into, they've got to enter to this area through Stone Mountain. And we kind of got conflicting information last time on the traffic, on the traffic study that was done. If it was done during a pandemic, then it's useless. You know, people were staying home. Cars weren't going to work and everything. We request that a good traffic study be done now that people are starting to go back to work to show the increase in traffic and everything. Because Henry had mentioned one date, and then there was another date then mentioned. And so we'd just like to ensure that a proper traffic study is done because there's going to be a lot of traffic coming up. The proposed Santa Ana Avenue, it's going to be put in and also coming right through Stone Mountain and everything. So that, that's part of it. That's our concerns. The, like I said, lack of infrastructure support. Our city market can barely handle what we get now during the summer and everything else with all the visitors and people coming through. We're looking at all these homes and everything. We need to have the infrastructure in place before we expand. And it's a two-sided sword because you got to, you got to have the people to have just cause to expand, and I understand that. But what we're doing is we're pushing everything to the south side. And I know each and every one of you have already been to the south side. You know what it's like over there. And you see what's going on down there already with, with how things look. And by jamming more people into a smaller area, all you're doing is lining the pockets of the synergy. You're allowing them to build more houses and sell more houses and stuff. It's not increasing quality of life for anybody. No RV parking. If you go look at what they just built, there's no RV parking. And this is supposed to be for the millennials and people that want to pack and go, lock and go. Well, you can't lock and go if you can't store something. We don't have the storage lots for anything. So like, that all falls up under the infrastructure stuff. You know, the, excuse me just a minute here. The South Fruta residential, let me know if I'm running out of time.
Finish your last thought there.
Okay. No, it's, it's just, the south side is just, it's crowded over there already. And we're going to allow them to just add more to that. And that's our concern. You know, they talk about future places that they can build. Henry's property, the other vacant property, what's going to go in there? More trailer parks, more, you know, South Fruta residential? All we're doing is putting two gallon of something in a gallon buckets, what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak on this item? Now is your opportunity. Once we close public hearing, you won't have the opportunity to speak. So is there anybody else that'd like to speak on this? Oh, in the public comment? Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, there's no other public comment. We're going to close public comment and bring it back to council. Does anybody have any questions on this item? I was going to ask, Henry, are you sitting down or you want to? It may be, Kim, you may be. So you guys did a traffic study?
Yes, absolutely.
Did you, could you, could you stand up to the mic so that way? Because we have remote. So I just want to address that, you know, what the traffic study-
Sure. And I know that traffic study doesn't affect the rezone, but the traffic study- Sure. And, and I know that traffic study doesn't affect the rezone, but the traffic study, um, situation started well in advance of the pandemic. Um, it started with Garden Estates subdivision, which is directly to the east, and then continued on with the same, engineering firm that does the traffic study. So it's a very comprehensive study that had to be submitted to CDOT for review and meet all of their, uh, recommended minimum requirements. So it was very involved.
Okay.
Can I just add something to that real quick, Mr. Mayor? So she's correct. Yeah. The traffic study was done with Garden Estates. Um, but if this property were to eventually come in with a land development application, we would obviously request more of an updated version of that traffic study based on the, the subdivision itself, and it would show, you know, what sort of improvements may need to be triggered offsite. But that'll come with the preliminary plan stage and be conveyed to the applicant through a public or a, a pre-application meeting, which, uh, we have with, uh, proposed developments like this. So communication will be, you know, delivered through those, those avenues. But with regards to the approval criteria and the, the reference of the traffic study, they, they don't necessarily go hand in hand. So, but just to reiterate the fact that, uh, an updated traffic study will be requested.
Okay. So the other question I had, you had a, um, illustration up there of what was allowed in that South Fruit Residential compared to large lot, um, residential. So the difference is one to four units per acre, and it'll be moving up to two to five. But item C, where you're talking about, I know they talked about trailer homes and that, that's a conditional, conditionally allowed. So they have to go through a conditional use permit, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So they couldn't build that unless it came through a public hearing process.
Right. And if it was going to be the whole subdivision, that's considered a mobile home park or a mobile home subdivision, and that's not an allowed use in this zone district, as you can see. Manufactured housing park or mobile home park has this asterix, which is not allowed in that zone district. So.
Okay. Who else has questions?
You got mine with the traffic.
Okay. Anybody else, Karen?
No.
Okay. All right. Uh, is there a motion then?
Um, I move that we approve ordinance twenty twenty one dash sixteen, amending the official zoning map of the city of Fruta by zoning approximately thirteen point two five acres, a property located at nine sixty Stone Mountain Drive to a South Fruta Residential Zone.
Counsel Harvey?
Yes.
Counsel Lenhart?
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien?
Yes.
Counsel Breaman?
Based on land use codes, yes.
Motion passes for zero.
All right. Thank you. And thank you for those that have come and given a public comment on this. And there will be, as they develop this, there'll be opportunities to give, uh, other feedback as they bring in their applications. So, um, with that, we're going to move into our resolution twenty twenty one dash nineteen, uh, finding approximately, property located at nineteen thirty highway six and fifty eligible to be annexed into the city of Fruta. Um, and consider the initiation annexation process for nineteen thirty highway six and fifty annexation. Henry?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, again, my name is Henry. I'd be giving you a staff presentation on, uh, this resolution, uh, twenty twenty one dash nineteen. Um, this is a resolution to essentially just determine the eligibility of, uh, annexation of a piece of property uh, that's currently outside the city limits, but has initiated through an annexation petition to be incorporated into the city limits. Uh, this resolution is set forth, uh, as a requirement in state statutes, um, by, uh, thirty one dash twelve dash one oh seven. And then finding it eligible is the criteria is set forth in, uh, Colorado revised statutes thirty one dash twelve dash one oh four one A, which essentially is either, either you have to do an election to incorporate a parcel into your city limits, uh, or you have to have one-sixth contiguity. The annexation, uh, there are the election portion is initiated by citizens of maybe a, a greater demographic, maybe a giant subdivision that, you know, needs city services. And then that, at that point, the whole community would be able to participate in that annexation decision. Uh, with regards to this, and frankly, the majority of the annexations that get petitioned to be in the city limits are executed, uh, through the contiguity requirements of the one-six. So does one-six of the property touch our existing city limits? And with this application, uh, and setting forth resolution twenty twenty one dash sixteen, which set today's date, which is also required by state statute. Uh, staff does, uh, think that this does have the one-six contiguity, not does think, it actually does have the contiguity. Here's the exhibit to the resolution. You can see here on the west side of the property. Um, here's highway six and fifty down here to the north or to the south. And this, uh, property over here to the west has that red barn at that intersection. It's the northeast intersection of, uh, nineteen road and highway six and fifty. There's a red barn there and a little house. That's this property right here. It's in the city limits and it's, it's zoned and ready to go for a commercial. And so the annexation petition is this piece right next to it, sixteen point two one point two two acres. Uh, it clearly does have the contiguity. And so this, uh, public hearing tonight, um, is executed through state statutes and is required for the council to take action. And so, uh, staff does recommend that the council adopt resolution twenty twenty one dash nineteen, a resolution of the Fruta City Council finding approximately sixteen point two one acres of property located at nineteen thirty highway six and fifty eligible to be annexed into the city of Fruta. And that concludes my presentation, Mr. Mayor. And I don't believe that the applicants here to provide any more comments than what's already been said.
Okay. All right. With that, we're going to open this up to, what?
We're both confused on this.
This doesn't match what's in our.
Right. Twenty twenty one nineteen is for the twenty five point nine six acres.
Yeah. And it says in here, it's the first reading.
No, you're on the second one. You're down on the. There's two. We've got another one after this. You're on the next one. So item resolution twenty twenty one dash nineteen is what he's talking about, the sixteen acres.
What page are you on? Cause I'm looking at twenty one.
So if I'm looking at that, that.
It's ninety eight, page ninety eight. Right?
No, I'm at page one oh two.
Yep.
No, no, on page, yeah, page ninety eight. Page ninety eight has the right one.
All right.
Thanks. We're both in the same boat. So thank you.
Yeah. Nope. Um, yeah. So we are on the right one. That's the next one. Um, so we're going to open this up to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Nope. I guess not, right? All right. With that, we're going to close public comment, bring you back to council. Are there any questions on this one? Besides one page number?
Well, so that, so that other one was the first reading that was in our minutes from the last meeting. Okay. Sorry. My bad.
Mine too.
Yay. I'm not alone.
And this, this is in our growth, in our growth.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I move we accept, uh, resolution twenty nineteen, uh, resolution of the city of Fruta, count, of the Fruta City Council, finding approximately sixteen point two one acres of property located at nineteen thirty highway six and fifty eligible to be annexed into the city of Fruta.
Second.
Counsel O'Brien?
Yes.
Counsel Harvey?
Yes.
Counsel Lenhart?
Yes.
Counsel Breaman?
Yes.
Motion passes for zero.
All right. Now, Matthew and Heather, we're moving into the next one.
Yeah, thanks.
You guys are ready for this one. Resolution twenty twenty one dash twenty, finding approximately twenty five point nine six acres of property located at nine fifty four nineteen road eligible, eligible to be annexed into the city of Fruta. And that's the Fruta Copper Creek annexation.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, members of council. My name is Henry. I'd be giving the staff presentation on resolution twenty twenty one dash twenty. Uh, also known as the, uh, Fruta Copper Creek Annexation. It's located at nine fifty four nineteen road, application twenty twenty one dash twenty seven. So again, this, uh, this resolution is set forth by state statutes, um, which is a requirement for the city council to take action to not only adopt, uh, a resolution to set a hearing date to determine the eligibility, but to also have a resolution to, uh, accept that and determine whether it's eligible or not. Um, in accordance with, uh, the Colorado revised statutes thirty one dash twelve dash one oh four one A, which essentially speaks to the contiguity or the perimeter of the property, uh, is touching existing city limits. And so with that, the existing city limits are here on the west side along nineteen road. And, uh, on the, uh, south side here along a future alignment, um, of I believe would be I road. But nonetheless, it is, these properties on the south of this subject property are within the city limits already. And it, it does have the contiguity on all of these sides by at least one-six. I think there's thirty-five percent of this property is contiguous with existing city limits. And again, I should have mentioned in the last presentation, but it should, uh, be a good opportunity. This is within our urban growth boundary. Called out in our future land use map within our comprehensive plan. So, uh, does check all the boxes for, uh, the requirements set forth by state statutes and is, uh, recommended to be in the city limits at some point, obviously now, um, for, uh, incorporation into the city of Fruta. And with that, uh, staff does recommend that the council adopt resolution twenty twenty one dash twenty. Uh, a resolution of the Fruta City Council finding approximately twenty five point nine six acres of property located at nine fifty four nineteen road eligible to be annexed into the city of Fruta. Thank you.
All right. With that, we're going to open up to public comment. Is there anybody that'd like to speak on this item? All right. Hearing none, we'll bring you back to council. Are there any questions, comments? There a motion?
I'm moved. We adopt resolution twenty twenty one dash twenty, a resolution of the Fruta City Council finding approximately twenty five point nine six acres of the property located at nine fifty four nineteen road eligible to be annexed in the city of Fruta.
Second.
Counsel Lenhart?
Yes.
Counsel Breaman?
Yes.
Counsel Harvey?
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes for zero.
All right. Thank you, Henry. All right. Uh, we don't have anything on our administrative agenda, so we're going to move into our city managers' report.
Right. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I have two updates. Uh, the first is detailed in the packet. So I imagine if, if you were able to, to read through that, I don't want to belabor it. Um, but essentially in that cover sheet, this year in the twenty twenty one annual budget, we budgeted in the wastewater recommend, in our wastewater fund, which is a separate fund, we, we budgeted two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars to work on a, um, what we've talked about in the past, we have H two S gas, uh, mitigation that we are trying to figure out how to, how to mitigate that so that we don't have that corrosion. Um, that process is taking longer to get to the, the root source and how to correctly, um, fix that. And we have a, we have a, a consulting group that's working on that for us so that we can, we can identify what the cost will be and exactly how to mitigate that. So this year we had put an estimated cost, knowing we have to, have to deal with it. But we are looking at that now needing to be a project likely next year by the time we, we have that figured out. Because of that, we do have a few needs that, that, that would be helpful to get started now rather than waiting into, you know, next year's budget process. And again, knowing we have to mitigate H two S gas, it doesn't mean that because we're not spending the money, it's, we will have a, have a cost that could even be more than the two hundred and twenty five thousand next, next year. Um, but we'd like to, what, what I'm, what I'm doing is, is moving some of those funds this year, which is detailed in there at fifty one thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight for three projects. A needs assessment update. We have completed nearly all the needs assessment at the wastewater plant. And so as we're doing our, our five-year capital improvement plan right now, we're realizing that it would be great to get this updated sooner than later, um, as we finish those last couple of projects so that next year we've, we've got, you know, years out ahead of us, uh, which we've been able to stay ahead of, uh, very well in the past. And then the aeration system preliminary design, again, and it's a project we know we, we have to take care of. So we'd like to get the design started sooner than later. And then the main switchgear preventative maintenance, which is, again, preventive maintenance, as noted, that is typically every five to seven years. We're about ten. So we'd like to just get that going. So no need for any action, but the reason why I put it in as an update is we don't typically get a budget approved, especially of these large items, and then shift and do something different when we're still going to have to do that. And I just wanted you to be up to speed on why we're doing that. If there's any concerns or questions, happy to, um, try to answer those for you tonight, but more of that was just an update unless there's any questions.
You're not really shifting my, you're, there's still money in this year's budget.
It's still, it's spending less than we planned, but it's for a different use because we, we still need to work towards the planned use, which, so that'll be in next year's budget for sure.
Questions, Mike, on that one?
Thank you. The, the next update is yesterday, we were able to have our first meeting since our workshop on, when we talked about housing and we discussed gathering experts in the valley to discuss the concept of, of affordable or attainable workforce housing in Fruta that avoids inclusionary zoning and avoids clustering and, and includes the, the local market and includes a way for residents to get into existing or new homes, uh, or units of, 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 of various sizes and, and any location in the city. And that program that we discussed, um, looking into and trying to dive into the details. We had, as we reached out to experts in the valley, we also, uh, and, and, and our planning and development director, Dan Karas, did, did the, the line share of this work. As, as he reached out and shared the concept with them to see if they'd be interested in helping, got a very warm response. And also asked the question, who, what are the, who are the other, or what are the other types of expertise or people that, that need to be here? So from that feedback, um, the group that we, that we met with was Rebecca Scaro, uh, with Dujara, which is a Realtor and the Realtor Group. Uh, Ron Abalo, who's a local developer, but also, uh, a representative of, of AMGD. JP Nisley, who's on our, uh, planning commission and also an appraiser. We had James Pulsifer, who is a major, uh, player in, uh, Bay Equity, which is, uh, he is a manager over the, the, a large region, very much further outside of our area in lending. And, uh, then we had Lori Chesnick, who's a local Realtor. We had Robert Jones, who's an engineer that works with developers in our area. We had Jesse Meese as a local business owner, but also as he has other involvement in, in construction with his powder coating company. There's two other members that weren't able to attend who are willing to participate, and that's Kevin Bray and Silas Coleman, who are both local developers as well. Um, it was a great meeting. They're all willing to, to, uh, work on a functional committee, um, on a monthly basis to help devise what the details of, um, proposing, how we could accomplish, uh, something of that nature, what it would take. And, and advising us and, and, and responding to advising us as a staff to work towards proposals to council and, and planning commission that you'd be involved in along the way to ask questions and, 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 uh, and, and get advice and think through. We don't have time tonight, but all the nuances that of course come with, with that type of process. So just wanted to let you know, we had that first kickoff. We, we, there was a lot of thought, uh, and a lot of great ideas coming out of that and, and a willingness, uh, to work with us. There was a, a, a good appreciation as well that we were coming to them at the concept stage and saying, we, we would like your help to create, not necessarily just coming to us and saying, we, we, we want your opinion on something we've already developed because we, we haven't even gotten to that point yet. And, uh, so the only question I had for you all is, would you like to consider at a future meeting formally appointing a committee? Or would you like us to continue working with the group for now and, and get, and get some more information to come back at a workshop? We'll, we'll do that anyway, but are you interested in a future meeting formally appointing a housing committee? Or having us work with, with, uh, and, and informal committee at the current time?
What are the pros and cons?
Um, I think, I think both can get the job done. The pros I, I think would be more in the long run as, as, as a process, you know, sometimes we've, we said, we have in the past, um, formally, or the council has formally appointed a committee for, for things like every six years when we have our, our ballot question for Tabor, uh, for example. Uh, and then that committee is able to vet and then, and then give a formal presentation, um, as a, as a body that council has appointed to give, to, to advise. So there's just a little more formality to it. Either way, they can, they can come and make a presentation. They can be involved and, and work through.
So I, I don't know, Dan, if you have any other comments on the pros and cons of that, but.
As the council, uh, receives feedback, I think you could also sort of assign questions that might be raised by other groups to that actual appointed group rather than it being, uh, so informal. So it does put some weight behind it, but it also gives the council. To that actual appointed group rather than it being so informal. So it does put some weight behind it, but it also gives the council the ability to say. You know, I want you to consider A B C thing that was brought up by, let's say, chamber or business community or what have you. That way, like there's an actual group behind the behind the concept. So I think that kind of bolsters its credibility.
Again, just to clarify, we're not asking. Asking if if you're interested in doing that, that would be at a future meeting. There'd be opportunity to. Consider as well, are there other members that need to be added? So we're not asking for a an appointment tonight by any means, just an update.
Is that current committee list? So the current committee list is not set in stone, so other people can be added in?
Correct, correct. But we did, we did check with them. We were trying to make sure we had each and through that discussion, we felt like we had each. Piece of of the of a potential process covered from an expertise, but along the way, they could easily be asking others to come. To come into that as as new information comes about.
Now we just have open ended on. That's officially a point like we do other boards, correct?
And and this would not be like a boarding commission with bylaws and all of those kinds of things. This would be a a working committee for for one particular.
Right.
Yeah.
I like the idea of legitimizing and, you know, yeah, having having that.
I think for public perception, then it's good that it's not just a hey, we're meeting and we're we've got, you know, some formality to it.
I though I think there may be one or two names that I would like to add on to that. So and those don't those that can be taken offline.
Sure. And and I think if if you're interested in doing that, I think I'm hearing interest unless unless there's any. You know, we could, we would create another agenda item in the future and 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 just, you know, discuss appointments and and all those aspects.
I am interested, but I think there's some gaps in that current committee.
Yeah.
That I would like to see filled.
Great.
Before it gets formalized.
I'd kind of echo that and I'd actually, I don't know if it'd be possible to find people that represent. Those workforces that were actually trying to meet their needs to be a part of that process. If it's even just to ask questions. Because that that might spur a conversation that needs to be had to.
Sure.
Process.
But when you're talking about, it's not really that formal. I mean, it is a formal thing, but when we want to add somebody, then it's just a matter of the council approving that person.
Right, but I'd rather get those people involved sooner because once that train leaves the station, it's hard to adjust.
That's not hard to adjust.
The direction that they're thinking.
Right. Is everybody good with? I'm starting that ball rolling up.
You know, one, one, one way we could handle this is we could have a. We could have an update to you all on kind of where we're at at a workshop, a discussion about gaps and 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 potential ideas. Then we could reach out to those people, see if they're willing and then set at a formal meeting a time to, I mean, there's there's not necessarily. We do have a timeframe that we'd like to be working through, but but there's we're not in a rush in in that aspect, so. If if that would probably, then we could have a discussion with you all. We could talk about gaps. We could talk about ideas. And then we could reach out to those people before putting on a formal meeting. Okay, now we're appointing, but. So that's great feedback. We gives us a lot of direction on that. So thank you. That's all I have tonight.
All right, with that, we're gonna bring you back to council reports of actions. We'll start down here with Karen.
Well, I want to. Say the new code enforcement guy is really doing a great job. Okay. I'm just saying, yeah, and. Okay, so I gotta tell you, I, yeah, procrastination, but anyway. I'm so luckily, you know, do the lifeline, call friends and get it done right away. So, you know, I just had to fess up to this. And good work. I did talk to him on the phone and congratulated him and said, I you can take me off your list now. So that was, yeah, I wanted to share that. The Fruta Youth Action Council, they did a little retreat on Sunday during this weekend. And are getting rolling and doing, starting to get some good good things going. Looks like they're gonna move their meetings to Monday, the second Monday of the month. So I look forward to hearing more about what their plans are for the future.
Now, they helped with the new murals in the tunnel, right?
That was mainly, yeah, this mainly these guys, yeah. And that's really all I have.
All right, with that, we're gonna go into murals, Kyle.
Arts and Culture Board did meet and since they have kind of wrapped up the Wellspring Project and the. The roundabouts, they're in discussions about kind of what their next. Projects will be, what the goals are, and there are just a ton of exciting ideas that that group is. Amazing and very vibrant and really creative ideas of engaging the community. In exciting ways. So that's gonna be really cool to see what what they decide to do. Friday. The rest of the sculptures will be getting installed around nine AM-ish, I think is when they're they're talking.
Weather permitting.
Weather permitting and yeah, there's and last time, you know, there was.
Too much wind.
There were a lot of people, yeah, there was too much wind. And then the next time they did it, there's, you know, it it's a long process, but. If you feel like swinging by and seeing it, it'll probably be kind of cool. I got to go out and check out the sculptures at Jeff's shop. On Mon- well, yesterday, Monday, and they're amazing. They look really, really cool. And then. I think you guys probably should have received an email for the ribbon cutting, which will be. Friday, August twenty seventh at five PM and it'd be amazing.
Year, right?
Yeah, it will be out at this.
Mike and Mike, they have this chicken.
It's prior to the concert.
Right. So if you're available. It'd be amazing if you wanted to be there and it's pretty exciting for the board. So that's all I've got.
Done a great job. I mean, wow.
It's pretty cool.
All right, Heather. All right, Matthew.
Um, I don't know if I mentioned last time Robin Brown has resigned, put in a resignation from GJAP. She's heading over to the university. And then Mike and I are gonna be spending.
All day.
Ten hours tomorrow, something like that, together at the GJAP Board Retreat.
That's it. You guys, all right. Only thing I have you out, Chamberhead there, we had our board meeting this last week and. Kayla was asked about coming in and presenting to the council, and I know we talked about that with budget coming up. And so she contacted Mike and I know they're getting that on. And I know, I think Mike and I talked about having the museum come in because I don't think they presented in over a year. And so just trying to catch up. Been remote so long, getting caught up on some of these organizations that we normally get presentations on an annual basis from. So. Everything else is going well over there. Then I've got tourism coming up next week. So other than that, I don't have anything else either.
I just had one other reminder, the new members have still not been through any kind of security lockdown sort of drill precautions.
Yeah, we have that slated for the workshop, which normally would be next week, but it'll be the week after. Which reminds me of one update I forgot to mention, but next week is the Mesa County Commissioners Town Hall here. I will not be here, but I I know Shannon will be here to assist them if they have any technology needs. It's not a council meeting, but but they they're hoping to see as many of you there as possible. But it's a town hall for the public to come and and speak with the commissioners, including you all, if you have questions. And it'll be in this room and.
Six three?
That's at six next week. And then the following week is, you know, we have an extra Tuesday this month. And so we'll have a workshop in this room and and one of the items is having one of our likely lieutenant pack come and and talk through that. So thank. But thank you for reminder on that.
Do you do you know, is there a is there a structure to that town hall? I mean, is there somebody moderating it and? Or do you do you know how that's gonna work?
I don't know necessarily. I've just they've they've shared with us the flyer, but I haven't seen the agenda.
And they have they had, they've had a one, I think, already.
Yeah, and.
Doing, I mean, we're expected to be there, but is so it'll be like a normal meeting. We don't need to let you know, yes, we're gonna be there.
No, it's posted.
Okay.
And we're not, like, they're not expecting us to say anything.
No, there there was some confusion because we had originally mentioned that it's our workshop night and we could do that. And what when they sent what they were gonna post to the public, I noticed that it was a joint. And and but what they had asked for was it's their own their town hall. And I said, no, we've rescheduled our our workshop. So it's 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 notice to the public as as a Mesa County Commissioner Town Hall in Fruta, and they're doing those in different locations.
Thank you.
You don't have to wear your name tag.
Okay, thanks.
Mike's got his, all right, any other, any other updates?
Could I just have a comment? I just.
Yes, can.
I we've had this discussion, I know in the past, but maybe with with our website and. You know, the the maybe a goal of having a Spanish. Version as well as English. I know just with my class that I have this year at school, I've got. Non-English speakers and so it really, you know, I feel like, you know, we've got a. A large group that are members of our community and how can we make sure we reach out to them? And I know that's a big lift. But I think that would be something that would be worth worth our time and. Good for our community too.
No, I I appreciate that comment. We we have been working with the group that we do our website and it's. It's 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 actually a fairly simple lift to do, but they're they're backed up at the moment, but we're making sure that we have that built in. If not, before the year's out at the beginning of the year and in next year's budget.
Just to kind of to follow up on that, that that's great to hear.
And it's multiple languages, not not just.
In terms of like our our forms and and sort of documents that you can get at the counter, are those available? In Spanish?
Not all of them, no.
It that would be another. I mean, if we can put that on. The list of things to get done. I'm sure there's somebody locally here that we could hire that that could that could go through that and I think that'd be great. That'd be a. A good step in the right direction.
Thank you.
Yeah. Gracias.
There's a group I use out of Utah.
Sure.
That is great at that stuff. So I'd rather go local.
Yeah. Right.
All right, any other comments? With that, we are going to adjourn at eight oh four PM.
I was looking at the clock like nine oh five. Yeah, good job.